Alrighty, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of Glendale City Council for April 26th, that 3:40. Roll call?
Councilmember Friedman, Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian. Mayor Devine.
Here. Your report, please.
Jen, for the April 26th, 2016 special public meeting of the city council was posted on Friday, April 22nd, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and the next item?
Minutes of the special meeting, city council meeting of Tuesday, April 11th, 2016, and joint city council and Glendale Economic Development Corporation meeting of April 12th, 2016.
I'll move approval of those minutes.
Second.
Thank you, and the minutes shall remain. Next item?
To public hearing, Director of Community Development regarding amendments to Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating generally to landscape standards involving artificial turf.
Okay, I will open the public hearing, and may I have a report, please?
Yes, ma'am, you may recall about a year ago, we started a journey to begin looking at how we balance landscape standards with the impacts of the drought, and our call to have our residents use less water, particularly when you consider that water is utilized in the irrigation of the front and side yard setbacks. So, wanting to make sure that we had a holistic and comprehensive approach, we took the opportunity to revisit the entirety of our landscape and parkway standards. You have recently enacted an ordinance pertaining to parkway standards, and now we have our senior planner, Kristin Asp, who will take you through material that will seem very familiar to you because you've seen it, sent it off to Planning Commission, and now it is back for your consideration as an ordinance, the landscape standards for drought-tolerant landscaping. So with that, Kristin?
Thank you. Okay. Left one? There we go. So again, to cover a little bit of background, yes, this topic has been discussed several times over the years, starting back in 2008, 2009. Code revisions first allowed artificial turf. Essentially, those rules stated that artificial turf could only be in the backyard, really in the R1 zone. We revisited the topic again in 2011, but no changes were made at that time. But in May of last year, council initiated changes for staff to look at drought-tolerant landscaping and artificial turf standards. From there, we worked with a consultant, Rescape, to study artificial turf and drought-tolerant landscaping. That's no fun.
That's your back. There you go.
There we go. However, since then, since we consulted with a consultant, Rescape, in October of 2015, the governor signed AB 1164, which is basically legislation that bars cities from banning artificial turf on residential property, but does allow cities to place reasonable standards on materials and the amount. We brought all of this material back to council for discussion on October 13th and December 8th of last year. That provided staff with directions, and the changes of the ordinance today are what we are going to discuss from that direction. But just to recap, our current landscaping rules in single-family zones, 40% of the total lot has to be landscaped, and half of that has to contain live plant materials. Additionally, all street setback areas must be fully landscaped with 50% live plant materials. In our other zones, in our multifamily zones, it ranges from 25% to 30% of the lot area. Commercial and industrial zones are generally not applicable, but there are some small setbacks in the C1 and C2 zone. And in our mixed-use zones, we require 10% of the lot area be landscaped.
And I'm terribly sorry to interrupt you, but may I ask, this ordinance, if you have dirt in your front yard, that is illegal, according to the...
It wouldn't comply with the proposed rules for minimum amount of landscaping.
Okay, thank you.
So, in the proposed ordinance, how we're going to address drought-tolerant landscapes is going to keep or maintain the 50% live plant material requirement. However, we are going to calculate the coverage of that 50% at full maturity or full growth of the drought-tolerant plants. However, for trees, we are going to calculate at the time of planting, and the reason for that is because if somebody has planted a five-gallon tree, it may take a few decades for that tree to reach a full canopy maturity spread. And unrelated to sort of drought-tolerant landscaping or artificial turf, we have added language in the ordinance that will prohibit painting of turf or dirt. It's generally done, people paint their brown lawns green to make it look like turf or that it's alive, and we are going to prohibit that. Now, landscapes in residential zones that are going to use artificial turf, these are for single-family and multifamily zones, we are again maintaining the 50% live plant material requirement. Artificial turf will not be considered live plant material. A three-foot-wide live plant material landscape border will be required at the base of a building that faces a street front or a street side, and also at the street front and street side property line. This is essentially at the back of the sidewalk. Originally, the three-foot border was suggested as an aesthetic reason, but it will also help in controlling stormwater runoff. We've also added language that artificial turf would need to drain to a pervious area of the site. So this is just an example, an illustration of where artificial turf could go. It is not to scale, it is not intended to show a 50% minimum or maximum, but it's indicating that the three-foot plant border would be at the base of the structure and at the property line. And this would be an example of it on a corner lot. Landscapes that are going to use artificial turf in mixed-use zones would only be permitted when not visible from the public right-of-way. Now, where artificial turf is going to be prohibited? It is going to be prohibited beneath the drip line of trees, and we are defining the drip line of trees to be the extent of the tree canopy at mature growth plus two additional feet. It's not going to be allowed in any required parking lot landscaping, when a landscape buffer is required next to residential zones, on any area sloped greater than 25%, and in industrial and commercial zones.
And, Madam Mayor, just for a point of clarification, on the reason why we wouldn't allow inside of the drip line of trees, even if the artificial turf does have the drainage capacity, can you explain a little bit why?
If, there was an explanation in the staff report of how artificial turf is generally installed, and that is digging out the top couple inches of dirt, recompacting it, and getting it to almost a 90% compaction rate before installing the artificial turf over that, that tends to harm the root system of a tree.
Right, and even though it has the turf is, already has holes in it for irrigation...
Correct, if properly installed, could damage the roots.
It's a problem. And let me ask you the question now, instead of waiting until the end, about the canopy. And you mentioned that beneath the drip line, extent of the tree canopy at mature growth, and what happens when, if a young tree is planted and it starts growing, and does, what do you propose the people do with the artificial turf? Do they cut back or keep cutting?
Artificial turf would have to be accounted for at the maturity of that tree's planting.
Oh, so when they plant the tree...
Correct, that's taking into consideration what will the tree grow to and accommodate so that there's room for the tree to grow.
Okay, I see. I was thinking that, okay, got it.
Sure.
Now that explains it, thank you.
The characteristics of artificial turf. So we have stated that artificial turf shall imitate a natural turf-like appearance. In order to achieve that, we've recommended a three-color blend minimum, mainly green, because artificial turf does come in lots of different colors. A one-and-a-half minimum-inch blade length with spines and uneven tops, we found those to be the most lifelike-looking artificial turf. As far as the infill that's used in installation of artificial turf, we are prohibiting crumb rubber. So things that could be allowed to be an infill would be sand, cork, coconut fiber. As this stuff evolves, I'm sure some other natural infill materials could be considered as well. And installation shall be done by a qualified landscape contractor. As far as some enforcement, it's unknown how many properties have installed artificial turf under the existing rules, but if a property owner can prove that artificial turf was installed before December 8th of 2015, it may remain as long as the three-foot-wide landscape borders are installed, that artificial turf is not located beneath the drip line of trees, and that it does not exceed 50% of the street setback area. If those three characteristics are achieved, the blade length, the number of colors, and the infill material does not have to comply with these newly recommended standards.
And this will be complaint-driven, so if you see it and...
Correct.
It's not, okay.
Correct. The Planning Commission heard this on April 6th, 2016, and recommended approval of the proposed minutes, and staff recommends council introduce the ordinance, and I'm available for any questions.
I have one card. Thank you, Kristin. Roberta Medford.
Mm-hmm. We do, unfortunately.
Hello, I'm Roberta Medford. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, it's important for my mental health. I heard you just say enforcement will be complaint-driven, leaving us to rat out our neighbors, apparently. I'm very unhappy with this. What people hear is like that card about what dogs hear, blah, 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 artificial turf, blah, 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 front yards, blah, 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 okay. And, I mean, the word installed is going to have to be defined, because here is what I have in my neighborhood, a lovely, prominent, attractive intersection in Montrose. Corner lot, at least a year ago, the resident there put artificial turf in the side of the lot, which is right on the street, and, I'm sorry, hang on one second. This is the first thing that you see when you approach his property. It's a foul line or whatever, from whatever playing field the artificial turf originally came from, and he put it right in the front of the yard. Now, under these rules, if he can prove that it was installed before that date, is that, is this allowed to remain as the appearance of my neighbor in Montrose? Okay, the other thing he did was, if it doesn't, if the piece of playing field didn't fit, he just folded it up against the rock, so that, and that's been there for at least a year. So I am genuinely asking you, is that going to be okay because it's grandfathered in? Okay, here's another one. I'm standing on the sidewalk, so this little piece of loveliness is about a foot off of the street, where he, the piece was too big, so he just folded it over. That's been there for a year. And then lastly, here's the same piece of folded turf, and in the back, he's got his rolls waiting presumably to go on the rest of the lot. So I'm very unhappy with this appearance, and I understand now, I'm afraid that even the enforcement is not going to apply to this because it's been installed, whatever that means, for at least a year. And I think this ordinance is a disaster, and I think it's going to be very unattractive in many neighborhoods, because people are just going to do whatever they can get away with the cheapest. He'll have someone sign off that someone, quote, "installed it," and there it'll be in our lovely neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you speak to that, Kristin, to the, I mean, it's not according to, obviously according to what we're talking about, so will enforcement be apropos for that particular property?
Depending, I couldn't see from the pictures, but depending on what it is, I don't think there's a three-foot border around. The length of the blade may not have been an inch and a half.
Correct.
It wouldn't, I don't know if it is under trees, so all of those would have to be, all those would have to come into conformance. I'm sorry, the blade length would not, but those would all have to come into a conformance. We'll send code enforcement out and take a look at it, once this ordinance is adopted.
Okay. Do you want to see?
Okay, I have some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Kristin, as I'm listening to the way we're calculating drip lines and calculating green space in the front yard, and the ability to place artificial turf around a tree, aren't there some inconsistencies in that? I mean, you plant a tree, it doesn't count, you don't count its mature drip line, you only count what the actual drip line is at the time it's planted, right?
Correct, for the tree.
For the tree. But you can't put artificial turf, you have to assume that the tree is going to become a mature tree, and then two feet further in diameter.
Correct.
So is that not, is there not some inconsistency there? Also, I know many oak tree experts say that you shouldn't put any plantings under the drip line of an oak tree. So if we plant an oak tree, let's say I've got a decent-sized front yard, let's say 50 by 50 or whatever, I think you could argue that a mature oak tree drip line is maybe close to that, or 40 by 40. You're saying that I plant that tree, but that doesn't count for the front yard landscaping, except the actual footprint of that tree now. Oak trees aren't supposed to have anything planted under their drip line, in and around their drip line. So is there not some inconsistency there between what we're calculating, the oak tree's coverage to be when it's planted, and at the same time, we're saying you can't put artificial turf, but also the natural care of oak trees require that there be nothing under the drip line? So if I plant an oak tree, any arborist is going to say, "Don't plant anything where the drip line is going to be, because it's going to interfere with its root system." So is there not some issue there with the...
Well, I'm not an arborist, and so I'm not going to speak to everything that can be planted underneath an oak tree, but in that maybe specific instance, I don't know that some live plant material not underneath the drip line, but where it could go may eventually could be counted there and could creep back as the tree matures to achieve the 50%.
But you can't put turf there. So why are we saying you can't put turf under the mature drip line, but you can put other things? As long as you've got it covered in other places, what's the rationale?
But I think you have, with respect to the drip line in this case of an oak, you were probably looking at any number of materials and trying to meet the ratios for what has to be live and what is not live. So if it's bark, or if it's pea gravel, or if it's something else that would go under that is suitable for an oak tree to allow the water to come down, you're at that point spacing out your front yard setback to comply with the ratios of the 50%, and then have the border and what have you. So I think there's lots of different ways. The ordinance is designed not to be a one-size-fits-all, but rather to allow for those ratios and the borders to allow somebody of whatever the size and shape of that front yard setback is to try best to comply.
Okay. The other point is on one of these diagrams with the home, and it indicates that there needs to be live plants around the foundation. Don't they recommend to have gravel around the foundation to encourage drainage so termites don't fester around? I've heard that, I'm not a home expert, but I've always heard that having live plants immediately next to your foundation is not a good thing, and that you should have gravel to facilitate the drainage away from the foundation.
I couldn't speak to the gravel comment.
Who's the home expert here?
Well, if that's the case, then I'm in deep trouble. There are flower beds. Well, there's flower beds and what have you that run up next to a number of houses. I mean, a lot of it, I think, is going to be dependent on the private owner going through and making sure that their foundation is secure and everything else that goes along with that. I don't know that this ordinance is intended to do just that.
But, you know, most important, I would very much like to have someone, a singular person on staff, who is able to make these decisions and make these calls, and be vested with the full authority of the council, full faith and authority of the council, to be reasonable, to be displaying good judgment and practicality whenever a homeowner comes to him or her with a particular issue. To me, that's the most important thing. We could tailor this ordinance any way we want to, and we're never going to figure out every single particular nuance on a topography or location. I just want someone, I want someone, I want the five-tool player, someone who's, all those tools, whatever they are that you have, someone who can make that decision reasonably, grant an exception if necessary, provide guidance, and not stick to some, you know, this is what the code says, and by gosh, you know, we've got to have the code above all else. So to me, that's the most important thing, Mr. City Manager.
I think this ordinance gets you a long way towards that ideal, because right now, we go with a short answer, and the short answer is no. This ordinance, thanks to the council's discussion, is that the answer is probably yes, with some caveats for what you've designed, what you've expressed as being appropriate for Glendale's communities, our neighborhoods. To the extent that we have what'll be a brand-new code enforcement program rolling out in the coming year, I think we understand that our goal in the arena of code enforcement, utilizing the administrative citation ordinance and vesting Mr. Landsafame's team with folks who are going to act as ombudsman as much as code enforcement officers, trying to solve problems first and foremost, will get us to that point. I don't know that that ideal is entirely encased in this ordinance, but it's a philosophy that we are trying to espouse in code enforcement, so that we don't lurch from one overstatement or one overreach to another. And so we just try to meet the intention of the ordinance, of the code, and as often and as best we can, the letter of the code. In the arena of neighborhood compatibility, sometimes that's a little bit subjective, but our goal is to try to minimize that subjectivity, and I think we can do that. And this ordinance, it does give us more latitude, and with latitude comes judgment, with judgment comes the opportunity for error, but I think by what you'll see, the way it'll be enforced, how Phil and his team will enforce it, I think we'll get to where you want to be. Certainly much more than we are right now, because right now, the answer is no.
And to add on to that, would our arborist be qualified to take questions like that that come to staff?
Yes, on matters of trees and tree health, by all means, and we can collaborate across those lines. To the extent, I would submit to you that you're probably not going to get down to the last square inch of what is supposed to be live and not live, but we will get to a point that is fair to the homeowner, again, that meets the intent and balances that with the letter of what it is we're trying to do. And the idea is, again, to ensure that our mature trees are protected, and that accrues to the benefit of the entire neighborhood. So if they are over a very small percentage, or they're under a very small percentage, our goal is to get it right, to be fair, to be balanced.
All right. Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, thank you. First of all, for Ms. Redford, floodgates are open. Neighborhood compatibility issues out the door, it went out the door when the government signed AB 1164, which preempted the cities from regulating the front lawns at least. We have to allow some sort of an artificial turf in front lawn. So I brought some pictures a couple of weeks ago, without this ordinance being there, that people took, removed their entire front lawn out and dropped gravels and, I don't know, barks and boulders and everything else, and we were talking about if the driveway is a little bit wider or narrower. So I think we cannot enforce it the way we would like to, we can regulate it. Now, I have a couple of questions from staff. The front setback, that it's 50% live, that precludes the, that's not including the driveway, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so typical site is 50 by 150, I have a 10-foot driveway, I have 40-feet-by-20-foot setback, it's like, or 25-foot setback, it's like a thousand square feet. Half of that can be, has to be live landscaping, and the other half, live material, and the other half has, can be anything else.
Could be, correct.
So that could be artificial turf, or could be gravel, or could be paving stones...
Or mulch, or...
Mulch, but it could be paving stones as well.
Mm-hmm.
So anything, it doesn't have to be artificial turf, that's what I'm saying.
Correct.
So the materials are basically what the homeowner likes, or their preference, basically. Am I correct?
Correct.
As long as they have 50% live landscaping in the front.
Correct.
So that area of, let's say, 500 square feet, it's a thousand-square-foot front setback, and you have 500 square feet, half of it is 500 square feet, live landscaping material, and it has to be, all of it has to be drought-tolerant, or it could be a combination of the, like, grass and drought tolerant?
Any new plantings, because we are in a Phase III water concentration, would have to be off the, be water-wise, which are all California-friendly?
So this is for new, basically, new front lawns?
New plantings.
New plantings. And the distance between the plants, because right now, I see they have cactuses, like, they're 18 inches tall, 10 feet apart, and the rest of it is all gravel, and people are saying this is complying with that 50% live landscaping material. What is the rule on that, as far as that 50%, that has to be live landscaping material?
It would be 50%, so in your example, 500 square feet of live plants. That area.
Whether it's separated, like if they're not, they don't all have to be together or not?
Correct.
It can be separated.
It can be separated, as long as it adds up to the 500 square feet.
And we looked at spacing, say, five feet apart, but then it really took away a lot of flexibility on design of what you want to do. You might have some that are closer together, some that are further apart, and it's appropriate for that.
Okay.
So we just tried to make it as simple as we could, to say, "Half of it needs to be live plant material." A code enforcement officer can go by and generally get close enough, or, wow, that's nowhere near half, or, boy, they've really gone overboard with that.
Okay, I think that's the important thing for me, because as I said, I was really not happy or upset with the way that people removed all their landscaping and dropped gravel or whatever, bark, tree bark in front of their, on their front lawns, and half of it is going to end up in the storm rain, because when it's windy days like yesterday, and it's going to end up in our oceans and flood the oceans, and it can go on and on and on. But I think we need to be, as far as enforcing, I don't know how we're going to enforce it, but there has to be some sort of an enforcement with this ordinance, that if you remove your landscaping before or after, because our current law doesn't allow removing your landscaping at all, even if you go to the Tier 3 drought phase, right? at all, even if you go to the Tier 3 drought phase, right? So it doesn't allow people to, they're in violation of the current ordinance if they remove all their landscaping and drop, and dump gravel or whatever, replace it with gravel. Am I correct, or am I wrong?
Yes, but we also suspended our enforcement on it. So if you should pass this ordinance, and I'll confer to double-check with City Attorney's Office, but then we would go out and enforce that 50% live material rule.
Right, we suspended it, so this ordinance is going to trigger that suspension to go away, or it's going to be, how's it going to be?
Miss Madam Mayor, members of council, I don't believe it necessarily trumps it, but what it does is, there are other alternatives to comply with the current ordinance, which homeowners will be able to take advantage of. But if, for example, and this is the sort of the brown lawn scenario, if somebody's lawn turns brown, essentially, they're allowed to keep it in that condition, and we wouldn't enforce that, because under state law, we're preempted.
No, I understand that.
Also because of our, we suspended the order.
I understand that having a brown lawn because of the water issue, but if you removed it all and put a plastic or viscuing on top of it, so nothing would grow, and you dumped gravel on top of that, that's enforceable.
Yeah, right, I don't think you can plant something that new or modified that doesn't comply with our current code after you adopt this ordinance. I think that's correct.
I'm talking about the current conditions, the existing conditions.
The current code or the current conditions?
The current code with current conditions, the problems that we have.
Right, you wouldn't be able to change it, because even with the drought conservation order, you wouldn't necessarily be able to plant something that doesn't comply with the code.
Or put something that's 100% non-live.
Right, correct.
So if, regardless of this is passing today or not, based on the ordinance that we have in the books, and we had it for years, if you removed your lawn and you replaced it with 100% gravel or anything else than live, live landscaping material, you are in violation of code.
Under the current code or the one that's...
Under the current code.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to...
Close the public hearing, or...
Close the hearing, and then council can deliberate, and somebody can introduce the ordinance.
Close the public hearing, and...
Discuss this for a while. If you're ready, Madam Mayor, I will introduce the ordinance.
Second? No second, okay. Introduced. Next item, please.
Adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.